Call it order and ask Mr. Jones to call roll.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Lawrence.
President.
Mr. Agent.
Here.
Mr. Ralph.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
We're honored to have Tim Perkin from the Rice Harbor Debra Seminar. To the podium to my left, he will lead us in our invocation and put a voice count while they're here.
No, not voice count. We got Jack Brunner and Riley Williams from Southeast.
From Southeast, good.
Yep.
You guys will come up here and then after the invocation, we'll at least, young people will lead us into pledge allegiance and if you all would stand.
Do join me in prayer, please. God, we are grateful for the opportunity to begin this meeting with prayer and talking to you. Father, we agree with the Psalmist who said that every day I will praise you and extol your name forever and ever. Father, we're grateful for our country, our state, our county, and for the city of Opa-licka. We're thankful for our freedoms, God, that you have bestowed upon us, that we have here in speech and religion. To be able to vote, we're grateful, God. Thank you for this community, God, for our first responders, our teachers, pastors, civic leaders. And God, we do think of those who are in need in our community, those who are following us, who are ill, or who have financial need, or lack employment, or maybe hurting God physically, spiritually, emotionally. Now, we pray that we would be a community that both loves you, God, and loves our fellow man. We pray for this meeting specifically, God, for our leaders to act with integrity. We ask for wisdom for them, that decisions made will be for the good of this community. May what is conducted tonight be God, to you honoring and glorifying, and we pray this in the strong name of Jesus. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You all have previously received a copy of the minutes of the House of date 2023 council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Addition, deletions, or corrections? Having none, I will present it. Citizens, can we take, well, let me back up. The under march by the mayor, you all saw an email that he sent that he is improving, that he hopes to be with at the next meeting. I think he's trying to work a little bit and hopefully work a little bit more next week. And so, we continue to have the mayor in our prayers as he is getting better. Citizens communication, Mr. Jones.
Okay, now, if you'd like to speak to council, please come and vote to my left. If you have not already, please sign into the signing sheet with your name, address, cell phone, email. Please keep it to five minutes or less. I believe we have some public hearings tonight. If you're here for a public hearing, please wait for that time. If you do speak, please section out your address. I think he's signed it up, so pull me up.
My wife and I live in the North Historic District.
Do you state your name and your address?
Oh, I'm Tom Nisbo. I live at 315 North Fort Street. The Fourth Avenue is the busy street to the North Historic District. And the only corner that doesn't have a four-way stop is our corner. As you're coming from Third Street to Fourth Street, right at the corner, there's a sign. It's diagonal, it's yellow, has an arrow at the top, and a big stop sign, or you know, a stop sign in the yellow. And below it, it says, "Prepare to stop." And when we sit out on the porch, half the cars that come down from Third Street stop, and there's no stop sign there. And we had a pretty bad wreck over the weekend at that corner. And I think you either gotta get rid of that sign or make it a four-way stop. Because it's dangerous and it's real confusing.
A little more city administration opinion to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You just make sure you have your phone number, so if we have, if we can't find what you're talking about in the comments.
Okay, thank you.
Let me give you guys these, this handout right here before I start talking, please. Some of you guys I know and some of you guys don't know me, and some of you guys I don't know. Here, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lindbergh B. Jackson. I am here on behalf of Barbara Jones, Styles of Us Salon, at 1900 South Long Street. First thing I want to emphasize to you all is that, right about now, I'm in the middle of having surgery on my eyes. I've been told that about after fifty, about eighty-five, ninety percent of us gonna have some cataracts. It looks smoky. I don't, I can't recognize anybody tonight. I've been working and dealing with this along with my cornea for probably the last eight months since this project started. I'm a consultant with Mrs. Jones. I'm not a partner, I'm not the contractor. I'm strictly a consultant with her because of my years of experience in the building and development business. I want to explain to you, the letter on the front kind of gives a brief narrative of what we have been through. Mrs. Jones has been a businesswoman there for the last twenty years. She's the proprietor. She recently, in the last couple of years, have had her husband to become a paraplegic falling out of a tree. Her business is pay. In her home outside of the city, she has to have someone take care of her husband, so she wanted to move her husband closer to her. She wanted to do upholstery, which she does out of her home, and cut back on her expenses of having someone look after her husband. I'm persuaded that the city of Opa-licka has been very, very helpful up until about three, four weeks ago in helping us with this particular task. But there seems to be some kind of a misunderstanding that she added on more than was supposed to be added. Judging by the amount of the permit in which she was charged, and having come back to these chambers and go through the board of zoning adjustment, there has been several changes there made. Initially, she got a permit to add on eighteen feet. If you look on your keypad on your phone, right above or below the eight, there is a zero. I used to draw cardiographically. And I'm of the opinion that relating, her relating to the surveyor or the person that was doing the plot plan, he hit a zero and it shows up ten feet. Well, we got a footing inspection. And Auburn, generally, the surveyor come out and spot this foundation. Here in Opa-licka, no one does that from the zone, I mean, from the code enforcement office. We got permission, if you'll notice, there's three separate tickets there for okay. Foundation's okay, no problem. Good. Plumbing, okay. We got that. Framing, okay. We got that. We came to the border zoning adjustment because she felt like she needed a little more space for storage on an eight-by-ten. The eight-by-ten was added to the rear. That same office approved an eight-by-ten code enforcement. I meant, border zoning adjustment. No problem. Jeff Carpenter came out, you won't see his approval there, but I was personally there on every inspection. Couldn't see what was going on, but I knew what should have been going on, and I felt like they would okay or tell me what was wrong. To no avail have we been turned down on any inspections. Three weeks ago, Jeff Carpenter came out and said, "This is a drawing," I can't see it, "of the building that was added on and put out there on one side where the red is, was added." You can ride by, it's standing still right now as we speak because of the fact being that some way, somehow, somebody decided that they didn't do something right. I couldn't see what was going on, couldn't see if you paid me to see tonight or during that time. But it was said that I knew, and by my experience, if I could see, I would have known. But we did not have anybody call our hands. All of a sudden, three weeks ago, stop work order, we approached Matt Mosley. What's going on, Matt? She brought her husband. He was confused. It was frustrating for him. Went to the mayor's office. The mayor's a little under the weather. Talking with the mayor's assistant. Nobody has told us anything in the last three weeks. Mrs. Jones is working every day. You might see her in Dollar Tree. You'll see her fixing hair three days a week at Styles of Us. Working so she can take care of her husband and become a good taxpaying citizen as she's been for the last twenty years. But nobody has given us anything in writing saying what was wrong. You see the stop work order? That's all we have. We've asked, we don't have money to litigate this particular issue. We don't want to. I don't feel like she should have to. But something is wrong, ladies and gentlemen. Something has gone wrong somewhere along the way. We had problems because in the initial outset, she said the permit is out of date. We write the mayor and the mayor takes care of that.
Mr. Jackson, we got your thing and we understand, and your five minutes is up.
Okay, all right. Is there any questions before I have a seat?
This line is not a question-and-answer session.
But I just thought maybe I could answer something that might would be helpful in you understanding what I give.
If we have any questions, we'll get them to you, but we won't, we won't answer, we won't ask them publicly here during citizens communication because it's citizens communication and not debate, so let us have.
And I thank you guys for the time and I thank you for allowing me to go over time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just would like to get something because she has got money borrowed.
This is not to Mr. Jackson, but President Smith, I would like to know what the end results are for this or what happened. If you could instruct the administration or at request of the mayor, let the city council know or let me know. I would appreciate that.
I would most definitely do that since we have a problem here.
Mr. Jackson, will you get out an email about this and bring everybody up to date?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Others?
My name is Mary Lockhart. I live on 514 Tatum Avenue in Opa-licka. And my problem is that we don't have a drainage ditch out there for the water that's coming in my yard to run, you know, on the outskirts of the road. I've asked the city to come in and try to build a drainage ditch, not in my yard, but of course, on the street because I know it's not allowed. Because I need the water to come out my yard. Every time it rains, it just sits there. So, I've been talking to the city two years now about building me one. Every time they get ready to do it, I think an emergency come up or something. They had to go somewhere else, so that's what I'm gonna bring to you. And I know my house was built way back, and there might not have been any drainage dug at that time. So that's why I've been asking the city to help out and just build one on the outside like it's supposed to, help me out so I can get the water out of my yard and get somebody over there to dig me a fridge dish, put up a body up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move on. Thank you. General business, Mr. Jones.
President Smith, first item on our general business is a request for downtown street closures for red clay grooming for a bike night event on September 21st, 2023.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye. Second item is a request for downtown street closures from the city of Opa-licka for the National Night Out Event on October 3rd, 2023.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye. Third item is a request for a temporary street closure from East Alamo West for their fall festival on November 17th, 2023.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye. Fourth item is a public hearing for a weed debate assessment at 8:15 First Avenue.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue comes to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare public hearing closed.
Fifth item is a public hearing for weed debate assessment at 2102 Long Street.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue comes to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare public hearing closed.
Sixth item is a public hearing for a weed debate assessment at 6:15 Martin Luther King Boulevard.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue comes to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare public hearing closed.
Seventh final item, public hearing, weed debate assessment at 9:15 York Avenue.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue comes to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare public hearing closed. Business family?
We're asking the council to approve a contract for pole rack mounting switch and fixed capacitor banks. The vehicle opening date was August 28th. The vehicle was mailed to nine vendors due to these were received, recommended contract, award to Stu C. Ernie on their low B lease specifications.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolutions, Mr. Gunn.
Mr. President, the first resolution approves travel expense reports submitted by the following persons: James Bush and Tim Cooper of the Information Technology Department, Laurie Hugley of Economic Development, Cynthia Boyd of Accounting, and Travasia Davis of the Municipal Court.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Agent.
Aye.
Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The second resolution authorizes the mayor to dispose of a 2009 Dodge Charger as surplus municipal property.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The third resolution approves the operating budgets for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. The general fund budget, as shown in the budget, is $88,182,112. The electric fund budget is $47,080,500.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Discussion. I just want to mention that I still would like to encourage President Smith, you to include in our work sessions in next year, work sessions. We've never had a work session that included a discussion, a full discussion of the city budget, where I can hear questions that the other city councilmen ask. They can hear my questions as well. So I just would like to encourage that if we can add a complete work session discussion like other municipalities do out in the open so that our citizens can.
In order to do that, so you will need to get the thing for another meeting earlier, if possible.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Or we'll, or we'll do something different if we need to move forward meeting or whatever, but I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Others?
Does this include the Chairman of Commerce?
No.
No, no, we did, we took that earlier.
Sorry.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number four, is a resolution accepting an Alabama Historical Commission grant for renovations to the GW Carver Hall located at 505 Martin Luther King Boulevard? This is the agenda item where we have prepared a revised resolution. The reason for that is we, the original resolution provides that the city will provide a $35,000 local max. That was incorrect. There is no local max required for this particular grant.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now, we have an amendment to it, right? Discussion?
Discussion.
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 So you now need a motion to amend?
I'd like to make a motion to amend according to.
By substitute to revise resolution.
Second. Okay, discussion. Motion is second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye to amend.
Thank you.
Now you need a motion to approve this amendment.
We have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye to approve this amendment.
And before we move on, I see we have a couple of members from the local VFW, and I want to let them know how much we appreciate their services. And hopefully, this is just the beginning of what we can do to get the building totally restored. Thank you.
Let me mention this. This is a, this is a grant to replace the roof. And there is a second grant application that the city is going to submit. This will, the second one will be a footwell grant. And it will be over $700,000. The purpose will be to restore the interior of the building and remove the lead paint, do things of that nature. The second grant, though, will require that this building be placed on the National Register of Historic Sites. So that will be one precondition that for the city receiving that second grant. And that's the city program. It works out. All right, moving on, resolution number five, the city to enter into an Alabama association upon our city's mutual consortium agreement. This is to provide mutual aid among various cities within the state of Alabama.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
A motion is second. Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Oh, in the past, the city has had an engagement letter with Jim Baller's law firm, which is Baller Stokes and Latty, to provide legal advice concerning matters involving broadband. This would be franchise agreements, small cell, micro cells, micro towers, and things of that nature. Mr. Baller's firm has merged with another law firm, which is Keller and Heckman. And so, we have resolution number six approving an engagement letter with Keller and Heckman. Mr. Baller will still be providing legal services to the city under this agreement. But this is necessary because the name of the firm has changed.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number seven approves a weed lien in the amount of $49.31 cents against the property located at 815 First Avenue.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number eight approves a weed lien in the amount of $101.89 cents against the property located at 2102 Long Street.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
A motion is second. Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number nine approves a weed lien in the amount of $140.28 cents against the property located at 615 Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
A motion is second. Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number 10 approves a weed lien in the amount of $116.26 cents against the property located at 915 York Avenue.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number 11 approves a special incorporation to Lee County Commission to support the Lee County Court referral program.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
A motion is second. Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Ordinance, Mr. Gunn.
Mr. President, the first ordinance is an ordinance to amend the zoning map by rezoning a approximately 1.17 acre tract of land located at 1625 First Avenue from an Hill 1 district, which is an industrial district, to a C 2 district, which is an office retail district. This ordinance is before the council for second reading, and it comes through the council with a positive recommendation from the Opa-licka Planning Commission.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The second ordinance is also before the council for second reading. This is an ordinance to rezonate a 4.180 acre parcel of land from an R 1 district, which is a rural district, to an R 2 district, which is a low-density residential district. This property is located and is accessed off of Old Bowery Road within the city of Opa-licka.
Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The third ordinance is before the council for first reading. This is an ordinance to amend various sections of the, of the city code and adding a new section, the entire section 28-406. This is an ordinance that amends the rules and procedures for the Opa-licka Power Services Department.
Is there, as a member to of the council to introduce?
Have a day.
Okay, now, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
A motion and second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye to suspend the rules.
Now is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.